Good afternoon. I'd like to call the Middleville Village Council Committee of the Whole Meeting to Order. Rhonda, may I have a roll call, please?
Mike Kramer.
Here.
Steve Baldry.
Here.
Robert Bishop.
Here.
Richard Hamilton.
Here.
Mackenzie Peters. Kevin Smith.
Here.
Ann Williams.
Both Mackenzie and Ann have provided explanations for their absence, so if anybody felt so inclined, a motion would be in order.
A move that we excuse them. Support.
We have a motion with support to excuse Mackenzie Peters and Ann Williams from the meeting tonight. Any further discussion before we vote? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Post. Motion carries. Please rise for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Everyone should have a copy of the agenda in front of them.
Just one note, that is an amended agenda. Sorry, I forgot I amended it. It said 2023, instead of 24. Well, I actually didn't even have it here. It does now.
This one says 24?
Yeah, so it's technically amended.
A motion to approve the agenda as printed?
As amended.
As amended.
Support.
We have a motion with support to approve the agenda as amended. Any further discussion before we vote? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Post. Motion carries. Public comment? If anybody has anything to speak on, welcome to take the podium. Really excited I don't have to ask Zoom for their input today.
Amen.
All right, moving on. I think Brandon is not here. Craig, do you want to take that update, or do you want to?
Um, I don't have any additional updates at this moment. We're working, getting high street ready to be let out for bid, waiting on the results of the drinking water assessment as far as, you know, identifying all the lines, and then we're just getting ready for completing the wastewater treatment plant, complete, complete, and then the other projects that we're working on.
Anybody have any questions on village projects before we move on? We will turn it over to Mark to go discuss council rules of procedure. You have a microphone. You don't have to move.
Okay. I'm gonna go with the village president's recommendation. Well, good afternoon. Happy New Year. Pleasure to be here. It's like my annual, not my annual visit, though. So, been asked to kind of go over our rules of procedure and give some background to council on Open Meetings Act issues, FOIA issues, and, if you will, some kind of best practices as an elected village official. Craig distributed kind of my outline that I've used in the past. You'll note that it talks about the Village Planning Commission. I'm not going to address any of that today, but this is kind of intended. You can use this as a guide. I'm not going to go line by line and read every page. I'll just kind of hit the high points, okay? And whenever you want me to stop, just tell me to stop. But we'll just go over this for a couple minutes. It occurred to me, and I know it's noted at the top of the rules of procedure, but we basically went to Committee of the Whole approach, just about 12 years ago, and little editorial in history. So, prior to that, you know, council had individual committees, like finance, ordinance, and the village adopted the practice of the Committee of the Whole, basically borrowing it from the county board. And it was felt that that would be a better way for all members to be kind of up to speed and up to date on the goings on in the village as opposed to the silos of the individual committees. And again, here's the editorial part comment. I think it's worked well, from what I've seen from council members over the years. And it is kind of unique. Not a lot of villages or even cities utilize it with, on a recurring basis. So, way to stick with it. I think it really has been helpful in terms of making sure that everybody's on the same page. So, the village, as you can guess, is guided and mandated by federal and state law. Michigan Constitution provides for the establishment of villages, provides certain rules and guidance for villages in the Constitution, and also then, obviously, state law. Not only the General Law Village Act, but obvious some other statutes, the Open Meetings Act. The Revenue Bond Act gives authority to the village whether or not the village is issuing bonds, but it gives you authority and sets out a process for doing certain things like adopting and amending your sewer and water ordinance provisions in your village code. A whole host of other statutes that apply in your personnel area with respect to how you treat village employees, which you can and cannot do there. So, a lot of state law guidance that has to be considered when the village takes its actions. And I think the village has generally been well-served by its staff over the years that when you have questions, if staff doesn't know it, then questions come to me and I can help provide that guidance. So, that's kind of the general overview. And let's take a look, you know, what is the expectation in terms of your role as village trustees? Not a lot, but they're important, right? You're making decisions on behalf of the village using your judgment based on input that you're getting from your constituents, your village residents. And so, it's not only, it's a two-way role where you're listening, but also communicating back to those residents. And we're going to talk a little bit towards the end, as long as I don't forget I put my note. But it's fascinating right now in this sphere of public officials and communication with the public with that wonderful, wonderful tool, social media. And you may have heard that there are cases winding their way up to the U.S. Supreme Court about government officials and use of social media, and when does that use of, like, a private social media page turn into creating a public forum that has certain constitutional restrictions on the use of that page? So, we'll touch a little bit on that. Just something kind of best practice, something to keep in mind. But that social media has certainly become a great way to communicate what's going on with the village, what you, as an elected official, might be advocating for or be working towards for the village. At the bottom of page two on this outline, talk about the role of the village president. That's set forth under the General Law Village Act. He is the chief executive officer of the village, presider at council meetings, voting member of council. That's always a question I get with smaller municipalities about, I'm the village president, do I get to vote on this? Do I have to vote on this? Can I abstain from this? Village president is a trustee, has an obligation to vote. And then the General Law Village Act says that it's required to give council information concerning affairs of the village and recommend measures which he or she considers expedient. In addition to that state law, that constitution, our ordinances that we adopt also can empower council or officers to do certain things, and our rules of procedure. Rules of procedure are required to be adopted pursuant to the General Law Village Act. It is, and I can't recall if we adopt them every year or not, but we certainly do when there's a new, after, you know, new council members are elected and seated, typically reviewed and updated. So, these rules of procedure have been around for about, going on 12 years, and there have been some modifications. We most recently modified them at the beginning of last year. And it sets forth basically how village council is going to conduct its affairs and its business. One thing that we always talk about and reiterate with this Committee of the Whole practice is we generally use the Committee of the Whole as an opportunity to discuss issues and make a recommendation for formal action by council that then is taken up at a formal council, a regular scheduled council meeting. However, since your Committee of the Whole meeting is a properly noticed, open meeting of the village council, this village council can make binding decisions at your Committee of the Whole. It is your practice not to do so, but if necessary, and we have had occasion where we can't wait another week to make this decision, it's a grant application that has to be submitted or an appointment that has to be made, you can, in your Committee of the Whole, make those decisions, and they can be final decisions. They don't have to be recommendations, okay? But again, general practice has been that they're just recommendations to your full council in your regular meetings, okay? Let's see. Oh, with respect to the council rules of procedure, also specifying kind of the roles of the village president there, chief presider of the council meetings enforces rules. You serve as the parliamentarian, the president serves as the parliamentarian unless the village council designates somebody else, and, you know, works with village staff with respect to setting the agenda for your meetings. Like I said, I'm going to skip over all the planning commission materials. Craig and Rhonda, feel free to share this with the planning commission members. Talk a little bit about, because I know questions always arise, about public comment and public hearings and interaction with the public during those two parts of the meeting. I like to say that those opportunities, public comment and public hearing, is for the public to make comments to you, you to receive those comments, and then if there's follow-up, if there are questions that are being asked, or there needs to be some follow-up to look into, that's something that, you know, council can direct staff to do or individual council members to do, but it's not intended to be an opportunity for debate. And I know that a lot of times, when there's maybe a public improvement project that's going to involve tearing up the streets, maybe you're proposing a special millage of some sort, in a community, there is a desire for council members, well, I want to respond to that comment that was made. And my recommendation is, and it's not, it's not, you know, in the law or anything, but my recommendation is to say, thank you for your comment. Take a note. Then, on your council agenda, you have council comments. You can respond at that point, or after the meeting, go up to the person, if they're still there, and say, I heard your comment, I heard your question, we'll get back to you, or refer them to the manager. But try to keep that, one, it's a kind of an efficiency thing, keep the meeting moving along, and two, hold true to that, it's public comment, it's opportunity for the public to comment to you, and then you can respond. My grandfather, who was not involved in politics, I liked politics as a kid, and he always said to me, if you ever get elected to an office, I'll never run for office, and somebody asks you a question, you make sure you look them in the eye and you tell them, I don't know the answer, but I will get back to you. And so, that's what your opportunity is when those things come up in public comment and the public hearing processes. Public hearings can be, you know, like, I do a lot of special assessment proceedings where they're initiated by petitions of property owners. This happens a lot in townships. And there can be flexibility, certainly, like if you have an engineer who's saying, okay, we're going to put in this sewer project, and your sewer assessment's going to be $10,000, that is going to get a property owner potentially pretty hot and wanting questions answered. You can structure a public comment period as like a public information session for question and answers, but what you're trying to do is really keep that meeting moving, get information to the public that they need, and then following up with questions without bogging down that process, okay? So, I noted on page four in terms of public hearings, providing that opportunity to gain information, listen, and if questions are asked, probably best to have follow-up outside of that public hearing process. With respect to council, then, obviously, once your public hearing's over, or it's time to make a decision, then that's the opportunity for you guys, obviously, to debate. And the thing to always keep in mind is, and this is under state law, that your comments are directed to the chair of the meeting, right? And the chair, because the chair is responsible for maintaining the order in the meeting, comments and debate should be directed through the chair. Keeps it, even keeps it fair. Ask for recognition. Now, in all my years working with the village, it's been pretty informal. Haven't had any issues that I can think of, and so it's worked out pretty well. So, it's not, you know, Mr. Speaker, I would like to be recognized, and I, you know, and yes, you're yielded five minutes or anything like that. But you do want, obviously, the recognition.
Chair calls and you then make the.
And if there are two people at the same time, chair gets to call, make the determination as to who goes first. I think the village council has done it pretty well in terms of understanding that, well, there are kind of two ways to deal with voting on an issue. Roberts Rules would say that an item is brought up, okay, next we'll discuss the budget, but you don't have a discussion on that until there's a motion before the board, before the council. Not many places hew to that rule. And instead, what happens is, hey, we're going to discuss the budget. Okay, this is the outline of the budget, this is, well, and then you'll have comments about, well, I think this is good, this is bad, this should be changed, I like this. And through that discussion, then somebody says, okay, I'll make a motion. Either of those approaches is fine. And generally, I'd say that the village has gone with that second approach of, we're going to talk about the budget, there are questions, there are comments, I like this, I don't like that, and then there's a motion. I think that's fine, okay? But ultimately, there has to be a motion. You act by motion, either to adopt an ordinance, move to adopt ordinance 2035 as presented, adopt resolution 24-2 as presented. You need a second, and then there's an opportunity for further discussion on that specific motion, call for a vote, determine whether there's a roll call vote required or not. Under our rules of procedure, ordinances and resolutions are done by roll call, okay? What's the difference between ordinance resolution and a motion? Well, a motion is the way in which the action to be taken by council is presented. So, and I know you guys mostly know this, sorry, but, you know, motion to adopt the resolution, okay? The official action is that the resolution as presented is being adopted, okay? But it's the motion to adopt that resolution that puts it into effect, motion to adopt that ordinance, okay? And then some things you'll just do a motion. I motion, you know, that we direct the manager to have a meeting with TK School Superintendent over crosswalks, okay? It doesn't have to be by a resolution, it doesn't have to be over by a ordinance. So, some things under state law have to be done by ordinance. You can only amend an existing ordinance with an ordinance. You can only take certain zoning actions with the adoption of a zoning ordinance. And in certain ordinances, there's a certain procedure, like you can't adopt an amendment to your zoning ordinance unless a public hearing has been held, and that can be held at the planning commission level. But if you haven't held that public hearing, you can't finally adopt that zoning ordinance. With, just as a little bit of background, so a charter township says you can't adopt an ordinance at the same meeting at which it's introduced. Village council, the general law village, you can do that. You can consider an ordinance for the first time and finally adopt it at the same meeting. General law township, you can do the same thing. Charter township, you need two readings, first reading, second reading, okay? There are provisions about once an ordinance is adopted and how it gets published, whether it can be done by a summary or whether you have to publish the whole darn thing. We hate that provision. So, you know, it's both state law and your rules that will dictate when certain things are required, whether it's ordinance resolution or by motion.
Nice to question.
Yep.
It might be tricky, but when you second or support an, or a motion, if you support a motion, when it comes to vote, you can't change your mind and vote no, can you?
Sure you can.
You can?
Sure you can.
It's the same as the second meeting.
Okay.
Yeah. Yep.
Is that, we learned different than that at a different training? Okay.
No, I mean, because you're, the point is, again, the motion just introduces the topic, right? And so, it's like, okay, I'm ready for council to make a decision on this, so I'm going to make the motion or support the motion.
Okay.
But doesn't mean that you're bound then to support it. You're just saying, I want council to finally consider this, and kind of cut off debate.
Nope, thank you. Appreciate that.
On page five, under C1C, I note in terms of the roll call votes that are taken, typically for adoption of the budget, expenditure of funds, going into closed session. The Open Meetings Act specifically says with respect to purposes of going into closed session, that has to be done by a roll call vote. And certain types of closed sessions require different vote requirements. So, to go in to consider an attorney-client privileged communication, you need five of seven votes of the council. For other exceptions that escape me right now, you can just do it by a simple majority of the council, okay? Anytime you're going to go into closed session, guys, give me a call, right, as we can talk, and you've been really good about that, just to go over those vote requirements, because some do require, can just be done by a majority, okay? Conflicts of interest, avoid them if you have a question about it, and the time to raise that is not at the meeting, it's before the meeting, so that, because those conflict of interest questions are oftentimes very fact-specific, and there is a good amount of guidance on conflict of interest questions from opinions of the Michigan Attorney General, and gets into very kind of specific things that we can then draw upon and to analogize about. So, the more notice you can provide, hey, I think I've got this issue, I, you know, we're proposing to enter into a snow removal contract, and my brother owns the company, okay? Is that a conflict? The answer would be no. We've had, unless you own a portion of the company, we've had an interesting case in the past where you had a village employee whose partner was on the council, and is that a conflict? And interestingly, again, say, no. So, the more notice you can provide on those conflict questions, the better. And again, ask early, ask often, okay? There are a couple of different state statutes, and what's interesting about these state statutes and conflict of interest is some state that they only apply to state officials, and that local municipal officials, officials are not included as state officials, but yet the Attorney General has taken the opinion that, no, they apply to municipal public officials. So, just because a statute says it doesn't apply, doesn't mean that it doesn't necessarily apply. Makes it fun in providing guidance, right? Let's see, skipping page eight, Open Meetings Act, Free News Information Act. So, obviously, Open Meetings Act applies to meetings of a quorum of members of a public body, so a quorum of the Village of Middleville Council, subject to Open Meetings Act, where you're deliberating towards making a decision. All of your deliberations are to be in public, with the exception of those very narrow exceptions to the Open Meetings Act in which we can go into closed session. For Rob and Steve, you guys are new here. I'd say we probably go into closed session once or twice a year maximum. And typically, that is to review a written letter from me to the village council, providing legal advice about your options on some legal issue or question. And so, when we're in closed session, you don't make a decision. The only decision I, and I always frame it when we start, the only decision you make in closed session is a decision to come out of closed session and return to open session. That's it. But I give advice, I outline options, and then council comes out and typically then considers the options and directs me typically to take one of those options that I described. There are other exceptions to the Open Meetings Act to meet in closed session, and like I said, if we need to examine those, we do that ahead of time and set that up so I can tell you, you know, what the motion is, what the vote will be, and how we best go about. But, and I candidly, I always have to look. I think it's sale of real property, negotiating bargaining, collective bargaining sessions, periodic personnel evaluation, those are all, those are the main reasons that the village has used and that most municipalities use for going into closed session.
Purchase of real property, not sale of.
That's, that's the one I always, I always have to look at it, so. Okay, well, then I'll look at that, and I'll have an answer for you.
My confidence is shaken right now.
No.
I asked the same, I asked him the question. He's like, no, actually, we can.
Did I say, okay?
For the purchase of, but not for the sale.
Are those closed sessions, though, are those, you have to, or you have an option to not?
Option to.
Correct.
Do not do it.
Correct. So, so just because the Open Meetings Act allows you to go into closed session, you don't have to.
Okay.
I will say, though, when it is to review an attorney-client privileged communication, I strongly, strongly, strongly recommend that you go into closed session, because otherwise, I say, okay, you can review my opinion, in open session, you could review it, so everybody reads the letter, you're all done reading the letter, put it down. You can't ask me questions about it, right? And the concern is that there would be a waiver of the attorney-client privilege, and so we don't want that, all right? Because then all of your discussions and deliberations with me about that can be subject to disclosure.
Which is why we wait, we go into closed session, we distribute the letter, we review it, discuss it, and then return it.
Correct. Yep. Yep. Okay?
Now I'm shook. I pay attention.
Let's see. Oh, so Open Meetings Act. There are rules for the public that apply, and you have to keep in mind that the Open Meetings Act is a pro-public-disclosure, pro-transparency statute. So, you can't bar anybody from attending unless they have been ruled disorderly, and that's a specific definition under state law. A member of the public has the right to come in and audio or video record. The public body can make rules, reasonable rules and regulations about that type of thing. So, I actually had a client where a member of the public was coming up with their camcorder, remember those things, and they were standing right in front of the table and videotaping everybody like seven inches away from their face. And we basically said, okay, that's unreasonable. So, we said, we're going to set up a box, okay, a six-foot by six-foot box, and that's where you can set up your camera to record, because that's where the outlets were. So, we didn't have cords running all over the place, and it wasn't disruptive in the meeting. So, state law recognizes that you can establish reasonable rules and regulations. You can't prohibit it, but you can regulate it, okay? And they don't have, if they want to come in and record, they don't have to get your prior approval, okay? Other than to make sure if you've established rules and regulations, like the way that those rules and regulations.
So, since we are recording and streaming and sending this out, are, is that part of your discussion on a public forum for later, or?
Well, no, but happy to talk about it, kind of like, you know, so it's, it is, it is an accommodation that's being made by the village. It's not legally required. Obviously, communities have gotten used to it, and residents and voters have gotten used to having that access post-COVID. But if the village council wanted to not broadcast its proceedings, you're not required.
So, transparency is key. I think that's huge. My concern down the road is, is the public forum issue. Eventually, we're going to have a hot-button topic that this is going to get shared on someone's social media page, there's going to be a pile of comments that are not on a government page, it's on someone's personal page. I mean, if two members are commenting on that, that's, that's, where does that get sticky? I mean, really, none of us should be commenting on it.
Yeah, so, let's talk about, yeah, let's just talk about that now. So, the village, to my knowledge, we prepared, I think you have done, a social media policy, okay? That policy, though, is only with respect to village.
Staff.
Sanctioned-run sites, okay? And, and. And, and in that policy, basically, we say, it's one-way communication, it's pushing out information on that social media page, Facebook saying, oh, there's the farmer's market, okay, or up there's the Heritage Days Festival coming up. And there is an opportunity for people who see that on that Facebook page to respond and say, hey, what, what are the times, or can we move it to another weekend, or I hate this event, you know, clogs up downtown. We disable those comments. Why? Because once you allow those comments, you have created, under the Federal First Amendment, a public forum. And if there's a comment in there of, sorry, I'm gonna pick on you, Kevin, you know, I think Village Middleville is great, except for Kevin Smith, he's a jerk, right? And you go, well, that's terrible, we're gonna delete that comment. You can't do that, because you've created a public forum, okay? And now you're doing viewpoint discrimination, okay? I like Kevin.
But, but if we did it, if we just disabled it right up front, no harm, no foul, then it just takes care of itself.
Correct. And, and where communities can run into a problem is, it's not, it's not prohibited, but where you run into a problem is if you have an allowed two-way communication, people posting comments, and then you go, nope, we're not doing this anymore. Again, you can do it, there is a way to do it, but you have to be very careful about that, because you're essentially taking away that public forum that existed, so.
If we ever owned, and to that point, though, like, if we have our own Facebook page or whatever, and we're creating, and, and it would be highly encouraged for members to read, but not comment, so that we're not engaging in communication, because that's when it, to your point, right? Like, that's where it gets sticky. But I think if we're opening ourselves up for public commentary, that we do it on our own turf, if you will, on our own Facebook page or whatever, and we can do whatever. Now, now the question mark is, is that, that if we are on our own private, yet public Facebook page, if we in fact disabled comments on, in that space, that's not subject to the same.
So, couple of different things. It, it is as clear as like a beef barley soup, right? I mean, I just had that for lunch, so. The, there are cases winding their way up through the Supreme Court. You know, former President Trump and his Twitter, and he had official POTUS Twitter, and then he had Donald Trump Twitter, and he was commenting, making statements about public matters on his private Twitter account. People were commenting, and he was deleting or having comments deleted. And the question is, okay, wait a second, you've created a public forum, one of the arguments is, and so now you are violating people's First Amendment rights by deleting certain comments or getting rid of certain comments. So the issue that you face as elected officials with a social media presence is, does your private social media page cross that line into a public forum, such that if you are doing content, being discerning about comments that are posted, then are you somehow crossing the line in terms of a First Amendment violation, because it is, you are acting in your official capacity, all right? It's not a village-maintained social media website, but your position as an elected village official has, does that wind up creating the look that someone's, well, he calls himself Village Trustee, Village Middleville Trustee, and he's posting about village items, and he's giving his opinion on things here. Is this not an official village page? And from, from, as a village attorney, I look at it, and I go, well, okay, wait a second, Rhonda doesn't have anything to do with monitoring that, or Craig doesn't have anything to do with monitoring that. What if there's a FOIA request in for, you know, the, the posts that you've done in the past thirty days? We don't have those documents, that's my first response, you know, it's not ours to manage, but it's, it's less than clear. So an approach would be, you have your personal Facebook page, keep it personal. You can have a kind of public official social media page, and then I think I would probably be, make that one-way communication, just like the village does, okay? Then you've avoided that issue, but you, you keep them separate, that. Your personal page is for personal stuff, it's the dinner you made, it's the trip you went on, it's the birth of the grandkid or whatever. And then your, your public trustee Facebook page is just, here's Heritage Days calendar, or, this is what I'm working for, period, but no comments. So, and, you know, then go to old-fashioned, kind of door-to-door, personal interaction, and then people can either give you a thumbs up or thumbs down. So.
Fair. Thanks, that's actually really helpful, to be quite frank.
But it, it'll be interesting to see what happens, you know, in terms of the Supreme Court cases and the federal cases, because there's a split in that treatment, and that's why the Supreme Court's gonna be weighing in. Okay? Are we on time? I mentioned, you can't exclude somebody from a public meeting unless, the phrase, I'm sorry, was breach of the peace, actually committed in the meeting, that's a defined term, so just that somebody's being loud or disruptive, not enough, breach of the peace. That, that, and that's a pretty far line, like, there's imminent danger resulting.
To that, Second Amendment auditing, they're disruptive frequently, and they test boundaries frequently. How, how does that get handled in a public forum? Because they are being disruptive, that does enable us to remove them from the hearing, or do we just have to sit and grin and bear it? I mean, I, I think that that pendulum is kind of swinging both directions at this stage.
Yeah, the, I mean, the, the lousy practical advice I'm gonna give is, the first time you let it go, the second time, if, if, if you're aware that it's, that they might be attending, you have the sheriff's deputy here, but it's, it's a, it's a pretty far line, and I, I can't sit here and say, today, this is the line, and if they cross it, but it really is almost like imminent physical harm.
I would have to say, at this point, we probably have not reached that in our meetings. We've had ornery people, we've had disruptive people, but I don't think we've reached the point where we don't feel safe, or we have sergeant wear escort anyone else.
Physical security, general, it would be the, would be the, I mean, at, at this stage, the, the baseline, right?
Correct.
For grounds to remove. Okay, I've got it, that's actually really good information.
And I mean, you know, it is not...
Knowing isn't enough.
Yeah, yeah, right.
You know, I don't wanna bore you with my experiences, but I, I mean, I've been in meetings where there's a proposed, you know, twenty million dollar sewer project around the lake, and sewer special assessments are gonna be sixteen, eighteen thousand dollars, that's a lot of money, and you have four hundred property owners in a gymnasium on a hot August night. Really bad timing. And, you know, part of it is, you just gotta let the process roll through, people are gonna be upset, and they're gonna be ornery and cranky, and that's their opportunity at that public hearing through that process to voice their displeasure, to ask those questions. And the best, you know, if you start getting into a back-and-forth, like I said, in terms of trying to nitpick or, or respond, the process just devolves. And so if everybody knows, here are the ground rules, you get to make your public comment, you have this much time, we wanna get through as many people as we can, and you stick to that, then that's the way I generally see best, best served. Okay? Let's see, oh yeah, real property purchase. Yeah.
That's what you told me.
Right, right. We can't do remote participation anymore for elected officials in order to count them towards a quorum and report. The only exception is for active military service. There are always bills floating around the legislature to allow for remote participation of elected officials. Don't see that they're going anyplace, although there was, state ag board just basically got in an amendment to allow them to do some remote participation, but I don't think they're going to expand that or broaden that for municipalities, but something that we can keep it, keep our eye on. Lastly, I'll mention in terms of the Freedom of Information Act, it, it obviously applies, it is for that public transparent transparency sunshine law after, post, post-Watergate, basically, so all public records, it can be writings, electronic photocopies, documents that are prepared, owned, used, retained by the public body or subject to disclosure under FOIA. There can be some exceptions from disclosure, and we have to look at those very carefully, but just know that basically, if it's a piece of paper that's touched your hands relating to village business, it's generally considered a public record subject to disclosure under FOIA. Okay? Your rules of procedure, I think, are in fairly good order and have, you know, served the council well. I'm not aware necessarily of any specific questions this time around, but know that our rules of procedure can be revised from time to time, just because you adopted them, adopted them doesn't mean you're locked into them, they, they can be changed. And, let's see, I don't know, anything else that...
Nope, we don't have anything else that we've heard from anybody, so.
Okay. You know what, again, I think the, the village is, for me, it's been a bright spot in terms of clients to work with, because everybody's always been very professional and cordial and understands, you know, the big picture, and so it makes my job easy and Craig's easy as well, so. But happy to answer any questions that you might have, either now or another time. And welcome, Steve. Welcome again.
I don't think so.
This is really good.
I'd love to take a deeper dive into that whole farming discussion from the municipal update.
Oh, okay.
And, and figure out what we can do to prevent that, because, like, someone goes and just buys a roe chicken, and all of a sudden there are commercial farms, they sell an egg a month? What the nonsense is that?
Yeah. Yeah, well, and then, I mean, there's a whole bunch of aspects in state law of, you know, preemption of local control, as, as we've mentioned in our updates and newsletters and sessions, where, you know, solar farms, wind energy, all that renewable energy type of legislation that's coming down, questions about, you know, regulating short-term rentals, so it's always something that's changing, we gotta keep our eyes on it. Anybody else have any questions? All right.
Thank you, Mark.
You're okay.
Thanks.
All right, we're gonna move on to discussion on 213 West Main Street, and while Craig's moving over there. So I'm reading this, and when we interview someone for a position, we cannot ask them if they're single or married, but we call out that Mr. Bainbridge is married on our sales document.
Yeah.
Is that because the spouse has a vested interest in the property?
Dollar rights.
Right.
Okay. I was, I was thinking that might be it.
Just real estate background going with it.
But I caught that, and it's like, we can't ask that question, why is this on here? That's it, I'm good.
A man has the right to buy property, but not sell property on his own if he's married. A woman can buy and/or sell without the permission of her husband.
So when Danielle tries to sell my truck to the construction workers, she has every right to do so?
Trucks are not included in that, just real property.
I mean, it's, it's real, it's in there.
Well, I was gonna move George up to, ahead of me, but...
I was gonna offer, but he walked out.
I know, and then he left, so if he gets back here, we can do that. But the, what you have in front of you regarding the sale of 213 West Main Street are documents that need to be approved, and we'll have them, if you're okay with them, moved to the next meeting, January ninth, for approval, and then we can schedule a, a closing as soon as possible to, to get this wrapped up. So the, the, or the items included are the quitclaim deed, ordinance, purchase agreement, and resolution for 213.
And so right now, you'd be adopting the, well, having it go on to the next council, but it's a two-step process when we do the sale? So it's a resolution to approve the form of the purchase agreement, and then once that's signed, then we do the ordinance.
Yep.
So can we do them all at the same meeting?
You're, you're not, you're not adopting, you wouldn't, at your January nine meeting, you would not be adopting the ordinance unless you have a signed purchase agreement by then.
We could have one by then.
So.
But we have to start with the resolution?
Correct.
Okay.
Yep.
Okay.
Any questions?
Seemed pretty straightforward.
I'll move to support the resolution.
Move forward all the documents?
No, we have four documents there, we have to...
Could you scroll down so that we have the recommended action at the top? There we go.
We recommend it, well, it has to be in the other order, though, it has to have resolution first, correct?
Yep.
Yeah, so it's basically a move to approve the resolution to authorize the sale. And, and with that, it's going to include the form of the purchase agreement and the form of the quitclaim deed.
We can get the...
So, so right now, we're approving the documents as printed, so that we can approach the seller.
I, I think what we, I think what we're trying to do here is, we need to approve the resolution authorizing the sale of 213 West Main Street. Once we've done that, then we go back, and then we can, and then we can act on your motion to approve the ordinance quitclaim deed purchase agreement. Am I right on that?
No.
Because I thought that you said...
The resolution...
My motion was to approve the resolution.
Oh, Roger that.
Resolution approves the purchase agreement, which has, has an attachment to the purchase agreement as a form of the quitclaim deed.
Plus quitclaim, yep.
So that authorizes to get that purchase agreement signed by both parties. Once that's signed, then it's an order for the council to consider the ordinance. And I, I think because you're looking at it tonight, that ordinance can come back and either, if, if you have the signed purchase agreement at the meeting on the ninth, you could do the ordinance on the ninth.
Got it.
Okay?
So that, that's all we're doing, just doing the...
Moving things forward to the next meeting essentially.
So the resolution moves forward to the next meeting, the ordinance, they don't discuss that all of the meetings is on the next meeting.
To get it signed, we have to...
Right?
Yeah, we have to sign it, we have to get them to sign it first, so.
The purchase agreement isn't signed, then you won't do an ordinance.
Okay. But it doesn't have to be at this meeting as a briefing, just a resolution?
I think that's fine.
Got it? Okay. So the motion is that it goes to full council for the resolution to approve the sale of the documents?
I think that's what Mr. Hamilton said.
That is exactly what I heard.
Just making sure that my notes stay true. Was there a second for that?
A second thing.
You did?
Or maybe actually...
Steve needs to name a paper.
Yeah, give it to Steve.
Jesus. Where's the scoreboard?
All right, we have a motion with support to approve the resol, or to move the resolution and supporting documents on to the next full council meeting. Any further discussion before we vote? Hearing none? Rhonda? Oh, I know, we don't, we're moving on. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Welcome in.
All right, next up, I've got George Holzwerth here, who is our wastewater treatment plant operator. If you haven't met him yet, here's your opportunity, come on up, George, and he'll introduce the topic of the Aqueduct proposal, and I think Rhonda has that, just to pull through it.
Okay, everybody lay down.
She's got this.
All right, so my name is George Holzwerth, superintendent of the wastewater plant, and I answer to Alec, and I believe this is my first time meeting most of you, so. What I'm here to seek is your agreement to enter into a contract with a startup company called Aqueduct. I'm not sure how many of you are familiar with the differences between, say, an Excel spreadsheet, everybody knows how to run one of those, and a database. So Excel, the information is contained within that cell. If you want to find it, you have to reference that cell. There's, you know, the, the main difference with, say, a database is, you assign it, you assign a value, a tag. So if I'm looking for the pounds per day average of influence, suspended solids, something like that, I'm going to give that a tag. And then all I have to do to look for that information is give it a date, specify that tag number, give it a date range, and all my information is automatically pulled out, and I can trend very easily with that. When I first hired on, I was trying to look on, getting some training on, on... When I first hired on, I was trying to look on, getting some training on an access database. But the advantages with this Aqueduct system is, for instance, if I were to go out and get trained in and be very proficient with an access database, I could do the trending and things that I want to do just for the wastewater plant. And that's it. The Aqueduct system can also do asset management and a whole slew of other features. And they're going to give us a pretty good deal. They're a startup company. They came in and met with a number of us and reviewed what they're offering. And with my help to show them what we want and how to, how it all gets laid out, they will build out the system for us and everything, you know, it'll be in use for, for a period of time while we're building it out. And only once we're satisfied with that final product, then the contract starts. And if we go to, I'm going to jump around here a little bit here. The last pa, basically the second to the last page, under the terms and renewal, there was, there was a lot of that language that I added in in order to protect the village.
What number of pages, the second to the last page?
It doesn't really, it's, it says order form on the very top.
This one, okay.
There you go. A number, quite a bit of this language under terms and renewal is, is language that I added in. And it will protect the, the village by specifying just when the, when the contract starts, under what terms we move forward, and how it automatically renews, and what the value of the contract would be going forward under the renewal terms. And then the term, the conditions are pretty straightforward. So jumping back to some of the features that it can do, it'll do all the data management that I'm looking for. It'll also do, start generating work orders. So under what's called the MPDES permit, it's a National Discharge Elimination System permit. That's issued by the, by the EPA, and it's administered by each of the states. So the Eagle administers that program. And I have to comply with all the terms and conditions of that under what's called an MPDES permit. Ours is a groundwater discharge permit. So all permits going forward, beginning a few years back, will now be required to have asset management within them. Going back to, say, the 70s, when they first issued a bunch of the money for the Clean Water Act, they didn't make that a requirement. And for those that did have it, they didn't enforce it. So communities left and right built all these wonderful wastewater treatment plants to protect the environment, and then staffed them with untrained, unqualified people, and then didn't maintain them. In part because you had the wrong people bringing that information to council. And then in other cases, council was simply unwilling to spend any money. So these places that they spent millions of dollars building started to crumble apart. So EPA got smart, started making that part of the permit renewal process. So we have to maintain the asset management. It's going to go through everything from all the nameplate data on the pumps and the motors, the valves, the pipes, age, condition, everything. Then we can, based on the manufacturer's recommended intervals, generate work orders, and then track that. And that, all of that then is just volumes of paperwork that the EPA is going to want to see. It'll also do the, the report generating. It'll also set up all my scheduling. The permit basically tells you when you can make schedules, or when you can take samples, and where to take them and all that. But it's very broad. It doesn't really make any specifications. Based on what our staff schedule is, things like this, we can then go in and just say, okay, on, on Monday, every Monday, we're going to collect this, 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 and this. Once a month, we have to collect this. Once a year, we have to collect this, but only on these particular monitoring wells, et cetera, et cetera. So this program, once it's set up, and they'll be doing all that setup, I just tell them what I want to see, all of that will then automatically be generated. Each employee would then have access to it on their phones or on a tablet. And it can, when they log in to say, we did this, all of that is tracked. So if you're doing rounds, it says, okay, who did the rounds on this date because we've got a problem? Okay, now we know who did that. So it's going to track all that kind of information much more efficiently and be able to generate reports much more efficiently than I could ever do on my own. Benefits, again, it's going to retain your institutional knowledge. You know, I plan on being here for a good while. But, you know, when Charlie was stepping out, if you were, if you were going to have a fresh, bright-eyed, eager but clueless employee, you're losing all that information. And that's what usually happens. So being able to have all that information and all that new guy has to, or girl has to know is how to get to it. You know, just where to look it up. And it's much, much better for that, for that type of information retention long-term for any village.
We can use that information also moving forward when we're assessing water sewer rates that we've going to propose to you before and things like that.
Right, and you're going to be able to generate that type of information that you, you know, if you have questions on, you know, they're going to be doing a rate assessment or a review. They want to know the age and condition of the pipe, all that kind of stuff. The, the reports that are being able to be pulled out with this type of database are pretty slick. You'll be able to go out and say, show me all the pipe that was in the ground since 1960. Is it ductile iron? Is it transite? Is it C900? You know, all kinds of different things.
This is $5,800 if I'm reading that correct. Is that accurate? And it's free setup?
Free setup, 50, 5,800 once with the setup and running the way I want it.
Yeah, and, and with regard to the things like pipe inventory and things like that, obviously that's stuff that happens over time, but that, that stuff you'll end up having to work with Alec on. Is that accurate? Like, when you say we have lead pipes or something like that?
Yes.
Well, we, we have that inventory taken.
We have, we have some inventory when we, you know, when we're talking mostly on the water side. We've got a system, and most of the guys are pretty proficient with it. And it's got some good features. This has other features that we're going to be using, but it also has that, because that's strictly for asset management. If this can do all of that, well, then at some point, we might decide, okay, we're going to do, to let that go by the wayside and portal all that information into here. All right? That's not a guarantee. We might say, well, we like, everybody's familiar with that, and we're just going to use this for my asset management and data and work orders and whatnot like that.
Is this cloud, is this in the cloud by the, is this in the cloud or does this get stored on our server?
Uh, I believe the cloud, but you just went over my head a little bit, so.
Yeah, stored locally or is it a software in the, like, you log into a website basically, right?
Right.
It got you.
But it, you know, and, and again, with most of these type systems, say we terminate their contract, we're just not satisfied or whatever, whatever, whatever information that had been generated, that's, that, that's ours.
Got it.
So that may be local storage, but should fit on just a hard drive.
So again, it'll go over work orders, asset management, report generation, all of that.
So user interface.
From what we're, what I, what I'm able to understand from it so far, from what they've showed us, it's very user-friendly, very intuitive. I've used a few different systems in the past. There's a Hock WIMS out there, that, that kind of program. They're expensive, number one. Anything from Hock is. It's a good product. But it only does the, the data generation and tracking. It doesn't do asset management or any of that other stuff. So this has, and it's, this is much more intuitive. There's, the same can be said for the maintenance management type programs. There's, there's a thousand different programs out there. But they're standalone systems. They just do that aspect. This sort of covers all the bases. So I'm, I'm quite eager to get started with this. And I think it'll be a good asset for the city. Is there any questions?
I think, at the end of the day, Mr. President, do we need to delay on moving this to a council, full council? Or do you think we could just get them access to this? I think the sooner the better, right? And it's January, so.
From my opinion, the sooner the better, yeah.
And it's January and probably get a nice roll into, into the coming year if you started now, right? If we, if you had the availability.
Yeah, basically is what I've, we've been kicking this around for a few months. So I tried to promise him that I'd have an answer for him shortly.
So they're building this from scratch?
They were built this from scratch, yes.
So we spent a lot of time and effort getting our inventory to the GIS. Is there any? Because I'm guessing this is going to be an application, user-based. There's people can get to it on their tablets. So if they're doing a work order on a valve, can, is there a, like, a process where we link that to all that work we did with the GIS system? This is the valve. There's a, there's an inventory item that we put in there. We click on that valve, it takes us to the GIS, which we've gone through and meticulously made sure we have the identification where the valve is, where the street is.
Again, that's, that, that feature right now is, is probably what we're going to start on last because we've already got a system that does that.
Yep.
And if we find out that we're very pleased with all the information that we've been generating to date, mostly on the wastewater side, then we're going to start migrating it over and expanding it. But I, my understanding is, is that information is very similar. You know, you just, you track it the same way, use it the same way.
As long as the possibility is there, I'm good with it.
Yes, I believe the possibility.
Mr. President, I have a request.
Sure.
Is this, was this built into our budget?
It was not built into the budget yet.
This is the water budget, right?
In the water budget.
Okay.
Any other questions? I like what I hear.
I have one.
Yeah, you too.
This was no cost until you approved the, the final bill, so is it?
That's correct. They presented it to George and to Alec, and then Alec and George presented it to me. This is the last step for that, so.
Mr. President, could we make this contingent on making it in terms of paying? Could, could we hear a report from you on what your experience is like prior to us approving it to be executed, you know, in terms of making payment? I think it would be nice for us to.
My understanding is that we would just sign the order form now. And then we start building out the system, and nothing has to be signed going forward until I'm happy with the system. But this simply gives them.
You can make it subject to his, to our satisfaction.
I, I think what I'm saying, I mean, just for clarity, we would love, since, because this is a new system for you, and it seems like it's going to be really beneficial to you, I think it might be nice for us to hear a report from you on how the experience was and, and the data that you're getting from it, if that makes any sense. I, I think that would be really helpful for us to just.
Are you asking for that to be contingent upon final signature?
For us to begin paying for it. Like, before we cut a check, let's make it contingent, before we cut a check to them for finishing up their work, could we hear a report from you to just, just to go over the system or maybe just show some sample reports or whatever? Just to show that it's working to your satisfaction.
I think at that point, we could just say, when you're ready to say this is a good product, come back and say.
Right, I, I, I think what they're, what they're looking for is, and I would tend to agree with.
They're looking for an approval right now.
Prescription, their side of things, is what I'm, I'm seeking is that authorization to spend the $5,800 at some point. And at some point in the future, I could simply say between you and me that I'll generate the report that you are asking, come back and, and give you guys my blessing, so to speak. And, but the, but the paperwork is already in place for that, for that contract to commence from that point. Does that make sense?
That's going to be my question, is when does his expectations get met and when do we pay? Is there some kind of a?
I think we're saying the same thing. It's.
What is the, what is your final bill? What are you expecting, you know, that the vendor provide you? When are you going to be satisfied? When's it going to be accepted? And what's the future support once it's?
What you're, what you're giving, I'll break it down a little bit here. What you're coming to us for is approval to move forward with a piece of software. It's open, it's very open-ended with regard to their performance. So what we're trying to do is protect you by saying what expectations, at what point do they hit that mark? Because anytime there's a zero setup fee and there's this unlimited runway, you could, you could put them through their paces to the point where they're just like, seriously, if he calls me one more time, I'm going to, you know what I mean? Like, I think what's really helpful for us is, is that we don't mind approving the 5,800. I think it's, I think it's phenomenal. I think it's going to help you considerably. I think to protect you in a contractual agreement is, what is the, what are the landmarks that we have to hit for them to, to, for us to move to the payment?
To summarize that, I would say.
Right there, Kevin. Termination. For the first six months following the commencement date, this agreement may be terminated by authorized representatives of either party by submitting a written notice of termination.
We're fine.
Yep, that's part of that language thing.
With respect to benchmarks, things that I'm going to be looking at are.
Whatever, you don't, you can spare us. I, I, I think whatever is important to you, we believe that that's what's going to happen. I think what, what we're just looking for is, hey, if they don't hit their mark, we want to be able to stand behind you and say enough is enough. We don't, so that's, that's really what we're trying to get here. So I think, and we, we just nailed it. This is a really, this is a Kevin-proof agreement. I love that. Can we say not, not to exceed 5,800? Would you be comfortable with that?
That's what we're asking for.
For the first year, yeah, yeah. Then, then there's, you know, cost of living increases.
Yeah, if, if George is happy with it, after that, we can build it into subsequent budgets.
Fair.
Are you looking for a decision today then, or can we make the decision next week?
Can, can we just give you the authorization to collect this, to, to sign them for? I mean, can we do that? I, I would, I would just like to make a motion for, to, to empower George to get the agreement signed.
Well, they were going to.
Empowering.
Or Craig. Village staff.
So the recommendation in your pack is approval of terms of service with Aqueduct systems?
Yes.
Not to exceed the 5,800.
Not to exceed 5,800. Thank you, George, for that. It's
Thank you.
exciting to get that, that tool in place for you, I'm sure.
All right, we have a motion with support to approve the terms and services with Aqueduct. Any further discussion before we vote? Hearing none? Rhonda, may I have a roll call, please?
Stephen Baldry?
Aye.
Robert Bishop?
Aye.
Richard Hamilton?
Aye.
Kevin Smith?
Aye.
Ian Williams?
Aye.
Mike Kramer?
Aye.
Motion carries. Congratulations.
Thanks, George.
Thanks, George.
Mr. Powers?
Good evening, council. So at previous meeting, we had discussed about some of the issues associated with parking enforcement. So during the December 12th, 2023 meeting, to be precise, parking enforcement was discussed, and staff was directed to investigate current processes to bring back before the council while reviewing regulations, multiple options became apparent that require further discussion prior to preparing a recommendation. So what I am, what my recommendation is, is for the village council to establish an ad hoc committee to review or prepare parking enforcement within the village, including the following staff members, being two council members, Alec Belson, Scott Ware, and myself. So this will be more of a workshop to evaluate the challenges that we have currently with the parking, where that way we could prepare recommendations to the appropriate bodies and do what needs to be done. where that way we could prepare recommendations to the appropriate bodies and do what needs to be done.
So, I would love to volunteer for this because, you know, Dick took my spot on planning commission, so I don't get to stare at ordinances as often as I used to. And I think I saw Kevin's hand come up, unless anybody else would like to. It's gonna be a lot of may, shall, shall not. There might even be a shant. You never know how old the ordinances are. Nobody else? So.
I didn't hear, I didn't hear what you said.
Um, he wants an ad hoc committee for parking.
Right.
So, I just said that you stole my spot on planning commission, so I don't get to stare at ordinances anymore, other than reading your minutes.
So, I'm on this.
No, he wants to be on it.
You, you wanna be on it?
I wanna be on this. I miss ordinances. Do you wanna be on it?
No, I shan't.
Says I'm not listening, throws that right back.
I was listening.
Love it.
Where I, where I fell out with.
I would, based on the last meeting, I would recommend, if Kevin's available, Kevin.
We, we have the most experience with parking issues in the village as of the past ten years, so it seems fair.
Yep.
Any, any, any discussion? Anybody else wanna feel good about it? I'll make the motion that we.
Yeah, but if you wanna be one of the two.
I'll make the motion that we appoint an ad hoc committee to review, prepare enforcement within the village for parking, including President Protem Smith and myself.
Support.
And, and the staff that's listed on it.
Support.
We have a motion with support to appoint an ad hoc committee. Any further discussion before we vote? So, we're making a committee. Do I need a roll call on that? Okay.
So, you just have to adhere to all the rules after you're in a hub committee, so.
Shall.
Yeah, shall.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you, council.
I'll get in touch with you.
Send out a doodle poll to all those involved, and we'll figure out where we can meet. Perfect. All right, we are down to your final public comment. Joe? All right, Jason? That's all the public. Final council comments? Anybody would like to start? Dick? Good? Bob?
I'm good.
Steve?
I'm good.
Kevin?
None for me.
Ann?
Nope.
Other than Happy New Year.
Yeah.
There you go. Happy New Year. Hope everybody's healthy. Hope my house gets healthy soon. All right. That's all we've got. Thanks for your time. Thanks for your patience. The motion would be in order.
Mr. President, I would like to make a motion to adjourn.
The motion with support adjourned. Any further discussion before we vote? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you.
I can't wait to be YouTube famous. This is gonna be great.
Typically taking the position of subquorum council.
So, it's the same.